Thank you, good evening. Tonight's agenda meeting, or agenda prep meeting is for the October 8th council meeting, 2012. What I've prepared for council is a potential agenda items. It looks a lot like an agenda and has sections from Public Works, Planning, Police, Administration, Unfinished Business. On the back of that page is a number of ongoing issues that we may refer to, of course, available for any questions or concerns at any time. Beginning with Public Works, the issue continues to be the opportunity that we have with the residential waste and recycling, commercial waste contract. Allied Waste countered our offer. We had sent them after the last meeting in September, a request that they extended to the first quarter of 2013. They countered that request with an offer of their own to extend through December 31st, 2013, on the stipulation that there would be some sort of adjustment in the rates. In discussing it on the phone with the manager there, he had intimated that a 4% rate increase would be a part of that, but that wasn't, of course, filled out in the letter. So council would have on the agenda in October, the opportunity whether to accept as written with a cap of 4% counter to 2013, you know, the end of 2013 with a different rate, for example, 3%, or just stay with the existing, you know, request that they consider again the first quarter only. So that's what you'll have to look at in the October meeting. Of course, related to that is the authorizing the rebidding of the residential waste recycling commercial waste contract and looking at the transfer station as well. We had a committee meeting a little bit after, I think one week after the council meeting, at which we discussed various options related to the transfer station and to the residential waste, residential recycling and commercial waste contract. It appears that we really couldn't sell it and in the long run be able to realize the kinds of things we would like to have, probably in the best interest of sell, if you will, the operation, if indeed, if it even was legal, which it probably is not. Any sort of long-term lease arrangement may be a bit problematic. So what we were thinking of, the committee was discussing was, you know, having it as a part of this contract with the idea being this, the simple reality for the waste industry is building landfills at a high cost, getting permits at a high cost, and the name of the game for them is getting tonnages over their scale, is getting waste into that landfill. The more they can get, the quicker they can get it, they can get a return on their investment. It's simple economics for them. And what we would be offering them is the opportunity to run the roll-off businesses in town and then as well as looking at running the weight that goes over the scales with the idea that there may be an interest on their part because it in essence directs tonnage to their landfill. Think of it like this, currently in the city we have a waste stream coming from the residential. We have a waste stream coming from the commercial, and then we have a waste stream coming from the roll-off business and a fourth waste stream, if you will, going over the scales from, you know, Saturday contractors and so forth. Right now, the residential, commercial waste goes to the Scottsdale facility that's operated by Allied Republic Waste. And for the most part, the stuff that goes from the pull-off, roll-off boxes and from the scales, for the most part, goes to waste management, though it doesn't necessarily by rule need to, sometimes it does go to Allied as well. And whatever number you put on that tonnage, what we would in essence be saying to one operator is that all of it can go to yours, with the idea being that maybe that's an incentive for them to give a more competitive price than what we have right now. Just some of the thinking going on to that, going into that. So what we did is, the committee kind of worked how that could look with the help of Michelle Nestor, and I think they thought it would be good to have Michelle here tonight just to be able to possibly answer any questions. But before I let Michelle be available for questions, Fabian?
Richard.
Or Richard, is there anything?
Yeah, I would like to sort of highlight essentially what the committee and Alex and Michelle and I agreed to, or thought would be in the best interest of the city. Essentially, the bid specification would effectively take us out of the garbage business entirely. We would no longer be billing, we would no longer be operating the transfer station, and it would be a hauler, a single hauler, we would do both for the city. In return for that, the city would request a trans, excuse me, a fee, a franchise fee, which could be annually as much as $450,000. That figure may be decreased depending on the impact of that figure on the residents who actually purchase the hauling services. Actually, a $300,000 franchise fee would probably garner us the same amount of income that we realize now, both the transfer station and the sale of stickers. And so therefore, there is consideration being given to using a figure somewhere less than $450,000 as a franchise fee and as low as $300,000. Essentially, the committee felt that the contract should start or begin on April 1st, 2012, so it sort of ties in.
2013.
2013, thank you. The essence to the contract would be this, that there would be a base rate, and this is according to the specification that we looked at, a base rate which would provide for a 65-gallon recycling container for always, once a week, together with a once-a-month bulk item pickup. That would be essentially your base rate plus the add-ons for the Christmas pickup of the trees and things of that nature. The residents would be able to select one of two methods for picking up the garbage. One would be to, which would be in addition to the base rate, would be the use of a 65-gallon container for garbage, or if they choose not to use a container for garbage, they could do a $1 a bag would be the price. In other words, you would have the recyclable container and if you wished and only put out one bag a month, it would essentially cost you the $1 or one a week or whatever. So it would be up to the consumer, the resident, to make that choice.
Richard, we weren't, we're gonna, everyone would have 65 gallons for garbage, not the 95.
Recycle.
Recycle.
And then you still have the option of stickers or a can.
But I know, but the, but the can for garbage would be 65.
Right, that's true. Now, that, we've had some differences of opinion on.
I know, I just wanted to know where we ended up.
So essentially, let, if I may.
You may.
May I, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We currently have a recycling container that holds 17 gallons, okay? The new one would hold 65 or 66 gallons, which is four times almost as much that you can put in this waste container. Unlike where Mr. Baldinari, the deputy mayor's daughter lives, he claims he puts out a 95 or 96 gallon container, that's every other week.
That's recycling.
That's recycling.
Garbage is every week.
Garbage is every week, thank you, thank you for filling in. But anyway, the recycling container is every other week at 95 gallons. Essentially, we're offering a 65-gallon container for recycling every week. So that's just so that you can get into a rhythm of pulling out the 265. I think that's it. As far as, as far as I can tell, the $300,000 would put us right on line with what we're taking in now. We would have no maintenance or upkeep of the transfer station, it'd be no need for purchasing new trucks at $180,000, $200,000 each. Perhaps we can pay off that radiation device that we purchased, I think we purchased that on a loan, it was $35,000 we borrowed for that, and it'll also free our employees to do the things that really need to be done around the town. I know that they're doing an excellent job now, but it is, it is difficult for them to do the things that have to be done on any occasion, so. That essentially, Fabian, do you have anything?
I still think we all have the option, you know, maybe the 95s, Richard. I mean, that's what we have to decide here. We got, we're asking, show any questions, and then we'll discuss the end of the meeting.
All right, well, if there's any, if there's any questions, Michelle, do you have anything you'd like to add or your reasons or?
I'm just, I'm open to answering questions, I mean, I could explain the whole contract and the reasons why the committee came to that decision. I think, you know, the franchise fee might need some further discussion. We do have it set at $450,000 right now, but that's based on the 2011 revenue that was generated at the transfer station. Projecting out and just looking at the town, we don't think that the transfer station could sustain that level, so it's actually lower than that. But if you looked at the money that the sanitation department brings in right now through roll-off, the residential and commercial collection, and some over the scale historically, somewhere around $300,000 probably is the revenue you generate, so that makes sense.
Net, that's net revenue?
That would be net, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because you wouldn't have any expense at that point.
That's taken into consideration, all of the manpower that's put into this transfer station, the driving back and forth, the roll-off boxes, setting up roll-off boxes, all the expenses incurred, gasoline, maintenance on the vehicles, all of those factors have been taken into account.
Some of those.
Some of those. So there are some that have yet to be, or have not been taken into account.
Correct.
What's the challenge for us is the way we've set up our accounting system, for example, the employees don't fill out a time sheet, assigning hours specifically to streets or to, to solid waste or to the transfer station. Part of admin's time, you know, is used to support the transfer station in negotiating of contracts, benefits and other things with the city, that's not attached. Amortizing, you know, equipment and thinking about those long-term costs, you know, have not been factored in. So when she's talking about net, we're careful not to talk about the word profit in the pure business sense, but as best as we can without fudging numbers or manipulating numbers, which we certainly can manipulate. In other words, I could say 5% of our bucks time is this, or 2% of my time is that, and come up with a manipulated number, that could even make that net smaller. We've chosen not to do that, so we, quite frankly, are putting it in our most reasonable light.
And that does not include depreciation, is that correct? That couldn't be a big item.
Right.
Correct, always, oh, I'm sorry.
Technically, a city is not allowed to take depreciation, allowed to put money in surplus, but you are not allowed to take depreciation because that would throw the burden on the current residents or taxpayers, so to speak, if you take current depreciation.
I have a question. Starting January 1, you've got the EPA regulations on your computers and things like that, how is that going to affect the, the rates and also could we maybe generate some revenue for the city through the transfer station for people dropping off computers and then have a contract with, with somebody that handles, because I think effective January 1, I think they have to kind of tear leasing apart and recycle a lot of this stuff in that area.
I'll speak in the macro sense first, and maybe Michelle or Joe can chime in, because the way the laws have been written, quite frankly, is the onus of the computer material, be they batteries or whatever it is that they don't want us to send to the landfills, is on the Best Buys Manufacturers and vendors of the world, it's not on municipalities. The municipalities are not being required to handle those in any particular or special way. So you as a consumer and the, and the vendor you bought it are, are really the ones responsible. You, the consumer, not to put it into the waste stream, and stores for making ways of recycling it. So at Best Buy you'll see these larger and larger containers to collect these kinds of things, and take your battery here and take your battery there, and that's who the onus is, and when you buy the computer, that's the cost. There'll be prices embedded in there.
Some companies are getting into the big business like this here too. You know, they're, they're getting these here computers from cities who get contracts with them and that, and they probably pay the cities a fee or this, maybe the city has to pay them a fee.
Well, Mr. Miller, we're trying to get out of the garbage business, and we don't want to add to it at this point.
I thought it might just be.
There are a number of recycling drives or centers for this material, I just don't think.
Well, we haven't made a decision on if we're even getting out of the business. So if I, if I may, I'm just making the suggestion that possibly, that if we didn't get out of the recycle, out of that business, it, I mean, the transfer station, that may be a place where we can make some money by charging people for dropping off computers and then sending them to a company that handles that.
Just to be clear, and I'll have a chance to that, the city isn't getting out of the garbage business in as much as it is in getting out of street paving. We contract to do street paving in this town.
I believe they were.
So, no, I'm just saying for everybody to be clear, the transfer station may, no matter what direction we end up, likely is going to be enhanced for more recycling opportunities and other things. So, you know, whether that transfer station grows in its capacity of what it takes on with a new vendor operating with us, you know, or contracting with us to do some operations there, it's just like, for example, you know, our earned income tax is being handled by a private sector, third-party vendor. There's so many things, the cities, this building is cleaned by a private sector, you know, company that contracts with us. As I go on and on, the city has, if you will, the popular term is outsourced, dozens of functions because we felt the private sector could more competitively provide a better cost for the city and the taxpayers at a better rate. So we're not getting out of the business in as much as we are, if you will, outsourcing the operation. So Michelle, I thought you wanted to add something about the electronics and.
About the electronics, yes. Actually, the law does not allow residents to be charged at anything for the collection of these devices.
Because you paid once when you bought it.
You bought it, and it's the manufacturer's responsibility to take that back, you know, so naturally it's going to be built into the new products we buy, but you can't charge to take them back.
Michelle, I have a couple of questions, yes. In, in, just so I'm clear, so, under this particular proposal, the city still maintains ownership of the transfer station, but all the costs associated with running it go to the bidder.
That is correct.
So if they want to, so, you know, if they want to expand, buy new equipment, they have to, they bear the burden of all of that.
That's correct. Well, the, the way the proposed draft right now reads is, in addition to the cost of collecting the residential and the commercial, they also have to propose a per-ton price that is their operating cost, and of course, that's what people will be charged going across the scale. So this, but the city itself won't be writing a check to the contractor, it will be the users that pay for the transfer station, just like any business would be.
So let me ask this question, are we doing this by line item? What if, what if that cost is more than we expect? I mean, what if, I mean, are they doing each, are they, is each, the residential, the commercial and the transfer station going to be separate line items? So if it, excuse me, if it turns out that one or the two of the, let's just say that the transfer station management is cost prohibitive for us, then we just, we wipe that out and, or we have to rebid or how?
It's actually, it's a combined total, because what you want is for the people who want various parts of it to give you the best price overall.
I understand that.
Do you have a serious?
So you have, so, so it's going to be all three of those, the commercial, residential and running the transfer station all combined?
Michelle, can I ask this? There may be one vendor who may, it may be more advantageous for them to operate our transfer station than the other two. Do you think that combining the bids will force the other vendors who maybe don't have such a great interest to cheat a little bit on, on the residential and commercial, in other words, maybe build some fat into that, because now we'll take this, but we'll pay some money for what we really don't want? I mean, that's why we're packaging it.
Yeah, that's why we're packaging it. It is, bottom line, the tonnage is important to everybody. Landfill tonnages are down about 30% across the board, partly because of the economy, but mostly just because waste generation is down because of the way things are packaged, all kinds of things like that. But if you're interested in the residential and commercial, it's to your advantage to make sure you've got the lowest overall price. So that transfer station still has value to you. There's an ability to run the roll-off, but you have a franchise on roll-off here that you control right now that hasn't particularly grown, to be honest. I mean, you have, I think, 40 roll-off boxes. You know, a business would look at that if they wanted to make a profit and say, we need to turn those boxes 200 times a month, maybe 300 times a month. In the busiest month I saw, they got turned, there were 40 hauls.
So that would be, that would be, the vendor then would also market the roll-off business and to the community and do all of that.
And this roll, this roll-off business would be outside of the city limits, they could take their roll-off boxes, their business into the township, into dairy township, wherever, living near township.
And what we've asked for in that regard is, you know, granted, your franchise fee, any franchise fee in a town is a pass-through cost, so that does get added on to either the residence, the commercial, whatever the bills are. So with the understanding that the vendor could expand this business with resources maybe you don't have, we've also included a revenue sharing fee that for every ton or every percent of the business that's generated beyond the city limits, there would also be an additional fee that comes back. What that is, we don't know yet, but that, that's more fair to your residents, so they wouldn't be paying the total cost of that.
Of the, of the, excuse me, Alex, of the three bidders, two of them have local landfills, the other one doesn't, do you think there'll be equal interest in bidding, competitively bidding this as it now is?
Well, and actually, I think we're going to have more than three bidders. I, you know, my job is also to create interest in this.
For example, some.
We got some different bidders talk to you, Cranberries talk to you.
The county allows for maybe 20 different haulers within the county, and some of those are based, at least their operations, for example, in Butler, and they might be serving some northwestern part of Westmoreland County, the Kensington Arnold area, because that's near where Butler's at. One of those vendors, for example, or haulers may decide, you know what, this now is worth us because what it in essence is doing is, again, giving us the opportunity to have further reach, you know, into eastern Westmoreland and vice versa, the other direction.
I think to answer that question a little better, if I may, if you were to try and sell this outright, then you would have fewer parties interested in it, but because it's packaged as a contract to protect getting that volume, I think you'll see the same amount of bidders, if not more.
Is it proposed a 10-year contract?
It is a five-year contract with a five-year option, and that's the limit that you're allowed to bid at in Pennsylvania.
What about setting the collection rates for residents in town here? Who does that? Do they set the rates?
Because they'll take, they're taking the risk of billing and the delinquencies, which you have a significant risk rate.
Yeah, we have, yes.
We still have a lot of delinquencies?
Yes.
About 38%?
And let me explain something, about 30.
About 30%, it's about what, 8,000, 80,000?
The, the problem with that is, you know, we have a six-month billing cycle, is we've trained a lot of people not to get, you know, not to be used to paying their bill, which for those who do pay their bill, they pay their bill. In other words, you know, the, the person who, you know, shoplifts, if you will, ends up being paid for by the people who pay at the gate, you know, that kind of thing. So our, the way it runs here unfortunately is we do have a high number of delinquents, it's a travesty quite frankly, and we need to do better at that, whether we do keep it. But what happens now is the hauler gives us a price, we do a markup. While we're saying to them, we don't care in as much as what that particular markup is on a two-yard box or a 12-yard or whatever, but here's the fee for doing service in our town, here's like the cable, the franchise fee. And again, just like we don't micromanage within the cable bill, all the different options particular customers have, it's just a fee for doing the service within the town. What we're doing for them is getting tonnage across their scales, which is what they are most interested in.
When you're talking about giving the lease out and they're expanding their business, what percentage of volume of extra trucks would come through the city to utilize this facility?
Don't have that determined. If it is an expansion significantly outside, I would imagine a lot of it will use Route 30, 982, you know, and they may not all be coming through town, so it's hard to quantify the trick, trick splits. But given the location of the transfer station being in a, you know, southeasternly corner of the city and kind of near the 982 Route 30 interchange, I would imagine that would be for many a lot of choice, depending on when they expand into their business, but that's certainly an interesting consideration.
Hold on, Alex, Michelle said she could answer that, you want to answer that, Michelle?
Yeah, first, your, your, the transfer station has a tonnage limit on it right now, so it would take a long time before anybody could grow it past that. If in fact they desire to do that, they're required to do a traffic study, and that traffic study is done via PennDOT and some experts, and then that has to be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection along with the permit expansion. So they can't just grow it without it making sense on.
I've seen towns where every other vehicle's a garbage truck. I mean, I don't know like, what's that?
I don't, I don't.
I mean, because it's a, okay, second question I have, what constitutes the station? Our garage, Joe's maintenance crews up there, the trucks, city trucks are fixed up there, does that go to them or?
We're looking at.
If they try to find a new place for?
We're looking at within the agreement to find a way to keep what we do up there currently be able to be down there. We're not anticipating initially here to have any sort of new and create a new public works building, but that may be something, you know, in the future. Whatever the agreement is, we have to be sure that we protect our own interests. We protect our ability to store and distribute salt during hours, no vanishing cables.
You're talking about leasing, and the way I understood it, the company's going to just take over the area.
Well, essentially, what we're leasing is that scale and the, and where they dump it, that's essentially it. The garage remains under our control hopefully.
At this point, it would have to be covered.
And to that point, you know, Joe, you probably feel like maybe you're getting walked over at this point, but I just, and the employees up there, but as far as I'm concerned, and I think I can speak for the council, I look at this as a great opportunity for this city to move forward with respect to the public works department. To take the two guys you got working on, driving those trucks all day, the people that you use setting up the boxes, the maintenance that's done, your mechanic, Darla that works at running the scales, those people would be better utilized, as Alex said before, working, or as Richard said before, working on the streets, doing the repairs that are necessary in this town that have long, it's been long overdue, the, you know, just removing weeds from the gutters and picking up leaves and just little things that make our community more livable. That's what we need our public works department to focus on. And I can assure you, from, again, from my perspective, that I don't think anybody's in danger of losing their job.
I agree with that. I think it's more probable that you'll be able to keep your job if we do this, really.
Yeah, so you can assure those, your employees, Joe, but, you know, I know some of them have expressed concern.
I think one of them put it like this, that he thought I had a head injury from I think one of them put it like this, that he thought I had a head injury from riding my bike and tipping it over for thinking of this idea. And to, you know, in Joe's defense, he has, not only this council, but several councils, stressed the needs of the street department. And, you know, quite frankly, the tail's wagging the dog, you know, we, we, the streets are the prime thing that we're to protect and maintain for this community. That's what people expect when they're paying taxes at a house. They're not expecting to have a great efficient transfer station. They're expecting that the street in front of their house will be well taken care of, that the utilities, that their property's protected with adequate fire and police. This, we believe, or at least I believe personally, will best enable us to do that into the future. By decoupling a very costly service that's hard to ensure, to maintenance, to equip, to adequately handle, and allowing someone who's better capable and has deeper resources to do that enables us to do what we can do best, and that's give people the adequate public works that they need. And Joe has been the biggest advocate for the public works needs of this town. There's nobody more in this community who, who is bothered more by the lack of deferred maintenance and regular maintenance on our streets and our equipment. And again, I do believe it can get us to that position where we can get better and adequate funding levels for that essential service.
You know, this could also free up some of those employees to take care of some of the different properties in the area that are dilapidating and talking about cutting down, maybe some trees or some shrubs and that, and also, and then putting lean parts against, you know, the property owners, you know, they neglected for years.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's hinted to me that we should request the extension to March thirty-first rather than a later date, Alex, from ally, waste, yeah, ally, waste.
Do we all have our, have all our, do we have all our ducks in a row as far as the proposal?
Joe.
Well, in the back of your manager report, and Michelle might be able to answer that, but I did do a timeline that theoretically could meet the March-April one. And so what I'm thinking is, and again, Michelle, you can certainly time in on this because I never talked to you about this specifically, we would, we would be advertising in mid-October, possibly October tenth. The bids would be due possibly November ninth. At the December meeting, the council would award the contract. Franchise ordinance would need to be adjusted in the January meeting. In the meantime, all of the customers would be alerted to options, ninety-five, sixty-five, or just sixty-five, and waste service begin on April one. And again, that's not fair to Michelle because I never really went over that, but the idea is, again, bid out with your approval in mid-October, bids due back early, mid-November, make the decision in December, awarding the contract using January, February, March to do the great challenge of delivering, you know, ordering, delivering, and getting the new, if you will, bins out there so that the new service can be implemented by March one.
Joe, do you have, do you have anything you wanna add or say, or, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you do, mouse the time. If you don't, that's okay.
I just think, once again, repeating myself, I don't know why we're lumping the transfer station in with a garbage contract. I think we're rushing into something that doesn't need rushed into. Can it be looked at? Should it be looked at? My, yes. I'm a little disappointed in the fact that I, that in my capacity as Director of Public Works, that I've had very little input into this study. I don't understand why that all of a sudden we're talking about the revenue from commercial, residential, and transfer station all lumped in together. We've been contracting our garbage services out since ninety-two, and it has always been run separate. I feel a study of this magnitude, there should have been a lot of onsite study. I feel that there's a, a lot of things that should have been seen and observed as opposed to just looking at figures, and Michelle and I, for whatever reason, have not been able to hook up.
Joe, you mean hook up, you mean like curbing up the transfer station, or just meeting together, any lunches or anything like that?
Combination thereof. Combination thereof.
I gotta tell you, that bothers me if you feel like you weren't a part of the process.
Correct.
Because you do have the history and you do have, and I also think it's just good business sense to put people that are directly impacted, if you're part of the process, you understand it better, so you, you end up, you know, really, really having a good feel for it. I mean, maybe it's just a question of somebody sitting down and explaining why we are where we are, and, and maybe that needs to happen. I mean, I don't know. If, if, all I gotta say is, I think if we put all of ourselves in Joe's position, I think it would bug us too if we, you know, weren't asked our opinion. That's, that's my, that's my personal.
We just bought two new boxes, or was it two new boxes?
No, sir.
How many was it?
We didn't, we didn't park some.
Oh, we didn't park some?
No, that's when we started getting into this, so I thought it would be best if we didn't spend any money on that.
He says he hasn't.
Yeah, everything, everything seems to be what rushes, and I, I agree with Joe. It's a large step that should be thoroughly thought over now, too. And just in this little bit of time, the meeting started out at, the figure was four-hundred-thousand. Two minutes later, it was down to three-hundred-thousand. What's it gonna be when, when you lease it? Hundred-and-fifty thousand?
And we'll decide to vote on that if we want to go to a hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Here, let's, to keep this thing in perspective, in, in its simplest terms, if our transfer station is making three-hundred-thousand dollars a year net, okay? Net, let's say it earns three-hundred-thousand. If we have a company that's going to pay us three-hundred-thousand dollars a year, then we get three employees, full-time employees, we no longer have to pay to run that transfer station, put it in, put those resources in a different direction. We've gotta look, we've gotta look down the road, we've gotta look down the road and see what kind of an impact that's going to have. And, you know, you maybe, you know, you had your, your pride has been wounded, Joe, but nonetheless, we, we have to move this thing forward at this point, and it's real simple. We either make the money this way or make the money that way, which is the easier way to do it.
You're not losing anything if you stay the same until one month. How long did you just argue over those stupid cans? You've spent more time on those cans.
None of us argued.
Well, the other thing, I mean-
Just Richard.
Kenny, I, I think it's more, I don't think it's a question of Joe's pride being hurt. I just think it's a question of, of his being concerned that we're rushing to judgment, which is what I've been saying all along. Although I do have concerns, like, you know, if, if we are making three-hundred-thousand dollars, I mean, we're basically holding our equipment together with duct tape in some cases. I mean, our guys do magic at the garage, keeping some of this equipment running, but it's old, it's antiquated, and we know that it's not very far down the road that we're gonna need-
Oh, I know.
-new trucks, more roll-off boxes, all those kinds of things that are extremely expensive. So, you know, if, if we are making three-hundred-thousand dollars a year, are we putting any of that money back for equipment? Probably not, okay? Now we don't have to do that, okay?
Wasn't the last meeting, they said, there are over a hundred-and-eighty thousand over projected for this year?
Well, the other thing that concerns me is, we've often used that transfer station to, and raise the rates and balance our budget many, many years, many, many years.
If there was a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars excess allegedly, right? If I remember from a meeting years ago?
We're, we're probably, I don't know, at the end of the day, that might be fair as far as our net rev, our, our gross revenue. In other words, we projected seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but, but to be clear, a lot of the roofs and the work that's being done is the result of a catastrophic storm.
Correct.
That, quite frankly-
Take, take the opportunity to buy that piece of equipment when you got the excess.
Well, if we're doing work now that they may have been doing in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, there's been a lot of push into this, this year in the past, so that's, that's something to be considered. I think if you could just put it in simplest form, imagine you had a business and it had a roll-off where it had a dumpster. That's where the transfer station is. It is a place where that is. Instead of having our drivers and our equipment and our liability and all of our costs moved to the landfill, which we don't do for residential and commercial wasting this time, we're suggesting to take a look at that at the transfer station. This is a rocket science. In many ways, this is basically offering to the private sector the available amount of tonnage that's predictable to get their landfills filled. The question for them will be, is it in their best interest to do that? What it would do for us in essence, though, would be able to potentially, again, create a, a steady revenue source through the franchise fee and then allow us to deploy our, our employees in a different manner. So that's where we're looking at. I mean, could, could we think and look at it long or short? Short. You know, like, there'd be other angles at this, yeah, but right now, this is sort of what they're considering. Come December, the council may vote to reject Joe's bid because this isn't gonna work for us. You know, they're in the caper seat, they're in the position to say no, and, and then, you know, decide to do differently. So-
I think, you know, I think, I think the concept is the right concept. I mean, I think it's the right idea because we do need to focus our employees back in the town doing what people, what needs to be done. I, I've said that all along. I just, I just, I just get a little bit nervous about how quickly we've done everything.
No, I don't have a problem with the quickness because I think we're running around a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar deficit this year. I'm afraid the city's heading bankruptcy, really. And we're very, very close. We're on tilt, and we've gotta do something, and I think we have to do it now. And that's why I'm for this kind of a thing where we outsource a potential high-cost situation and get an insured amount of revenue.
First of all, Richard, I don't know that I agree with that. I mean, I don't know that the numbers support that, but it, it sounds to me like at, at the best-case scenario, we'll be breaking even with the transfer station. If we, if we, if we do this, we get three-hundred-thousand dollars revenue, which is what we're getting now, and that's, that's not gonna-
No expenses?
No expenses, no.
Yeah, we've eliminated.
No expenses.
We have to replace, we have, we have, recently had to have that scale rebuilt, right, Joe? What that cost?
Five thousand.
Thirty, and we have a bioreligation detector, too, right? What that cost?
Yeah, but that's not yearly expense.
Yeah, but I know that these are, yeah.
How about the trucks, they're like, how many we have leaking? Do we have any fines that we don't know about that, you know, we have not checked into? Like, uh-
Fines?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Yeah, no fines, DP?
No, sir.
You have nobody calling from landfill telling you not to bring your trucks up there to leak? Never had that?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. Is that right, Alex? Is that right, Alex?
What, I, excuse me, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what are you implying, Mr. Givern Angela? That people from landfill are, were running illegal trucks and people from landfill are-
No, they told you guys not to bring your trucks up there maybe because, you know, they leak it. We don't want, you know, we don't want you to get busted or nothing like that. Alex?
It's hearsay. I mean-
Wow.
I said it's hearsay. You know, I've not been on the call, I've not made a call, I've not received a call. I don't know what Joe's received, you know. Do, do landfills do stuff like that? I don't know. That's why I hear, I don't know if they do it with us, I don't know if they do it with anyone in particular. Just like there's checkpoints for DUI, people find out there's stuff going on, you know, they avoid the road if they're, whatever. And again, it's just total hearsay. I'm not trying to say you're something, Joe, I'm not saying you're something, it's just hearsay. You know, what, what the reality is, when it comes to this, this operation, is, is it capitalized to compete at the private sector level? You know, many people have, years ago, whether it was how we maintenance this building, whether we do paving, whether we do a number of other things, have decided the private sector's probably in a better position from a capital standpoint to make the investments necessary to be cost-efficient.
And you know what?
And so, so in this particular instance, we're just saying in another time, could it be with this transfer station more efficiently operated and better capitalized to grow done by a, a different entity?
And Mr. Deputy Mayor, don't forget, we just did the same thing with the garage. We kept pulling the money out, pulling the money out of the garage to support the city. And we found out, hey, the garage has to be closed, and we had to spend, what, three million dollars to rehabilitate-
A big chunk of change.
Do we wanna do the same thing in this case? I don't think so.
No.
And as far, Rosie, I understand your concern, but don't forget, we had practically no snow last year, so we made it, we didn't spend eighty thousand dollars. This year, if we have the snow, we're going to be spending eighty thousand dollars.
On salt.
On salt and truckers. And we had a windfall on the ice storm, and that was about a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, you know, I think, net revenue. So that's why I'm saying that this city is, and I think we'll see the results of the study that they're doing, this city is headed toward bankruptcy, and I think this is one of the steps that we have to take in order to partially prevent that, because that two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year that we have to pay for the garage, that's a tremendous burden.
Also, we have to worry about the money that we're gonna be putting into pension funds and things like that, there's gonna be big increases too.
Fortunately, the employee's pension fund is on solid ground. I think, I think the least pension fund is almost there.
Oh, great, good.
We are, the minimum obligation that the state is telling us that we have to make, I provided that at the last council meeting, was about a thirty-five, forty percent increase. The state is saying, on the FOP side of it. So you're correct, the, the two different pensions-
Right.
-they're a little bit different. However, compared to some other parts of the state, they, they're pretty, they're pretty good condition.
Right.
But we will, we have to continue to be concerned about the long-term pension costs because we are in a defined benefit environment, unfortunately, the public sector, instead of the defined contribution. And as the private sector learned decades ago, you don't wanna be in defined benefit, you just-
And nobody's, no municipalities are moving towards defined benefit plans or-
What the, they're, we're, we're required by law to provide pensions we do, but what we're trying to do is increase the contributions. For example, the police are allowed to go up to five percent, and we're currently like a two-and-a-half percent. So I think what we need to do is shift some of those to or toward the employees.
I think this move will help us keep our employees and help keep the pension funds solid.
Again, just, just to be clear on with, with Richard Jim, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and two thousand ten, the city spent more than it took in, and it raised taxes, and it also increased hauling fees and the prices that went over the scales. It did, last year, make more money than it spent, but most of us agree that was primarily the result of the windfall for the storm. Those years cumulatively, it was a hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar deficit, if you will, or a hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand the next year expenditure, again, over, expenditures over revenues, a hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand in two thousand nine, dropped to one oh-six in, in two thousand ten, again, because tax increases were as well contributing to that. Now, recognize, one mil in this city, sixty-five thousand. The average of those four particular years is about a hundred-and-seventy thousand is what you were averaging annually, spending more than you took in. So, I mean, it's-
Three mil's worth of-
It's problematic, the direction, the trajectory.
Half of that is, half of that is hard to tell.
There was, there was two tax mil increases, and there were increase in rates for residential waste as well as increase during that era of what was charged over the scales.
So budget-wise, Alex, for this year, where, where are we? I mean, I read your report, but how are we performing against the budget?
On the real estate, we're, we're lower than what we projected.
You mean revenue?
Yeah, revenue on the real estate. So what that's causing me to do is be a little more pessimistic going into next year. We're actually doing a little better on EIT and some of those. We, I think, we'll, we'll have a balanced budget this year, a lot of it because we're, we were very conservative, thanks to Joe, at the transfer station on revenue, because I think we'll beat the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And again, once again, that will keep this, this city to have a balanced, or if you will, surplus budget. But again, we're not able to count on that in the future, and if we believe that, for example, the permit is, correct me if I'm wrong, is about, we do about thirty-five tons, maybe, and our permit's about seventy tons?
Yes. Over, over a twenty-day period, you can equal seventy tons per day.
So theoretically, the private sector could grow that another thirty-five tons. Our ability to grow it at all- Our ability to grow it at all is, quite frankly, as we all discussed, limited by our willingness and pockets to invest in the new equipment. And we're limited by our geography.
Alex, I wanted to ask this question on the $80,000. I think, is that delinquent in garbage collection?
Yeah, don't quote me on the delinquencies. I would just say that the way the billing has been conducted, our delinquency rates are higher than the private sector, and that's part of the reason why waste management particularly really overshot the last bid. Because what they were doing in essence was saying, look, the city wants it both ways. We're requiring the hauler to pick up no matter what. So if Rosie doesn't pay for three years, Rosie still gets picked up. Richard pays for that. Now, Richard pays for that because the hauler's charging Richard the premium to pick up the neighbor's garbage. When, if we, what we should do, quite frankly, is stop picking up somebody who's in arrears or find other ways to make it less palatable to be in that position.
One point we talked about tying it in with water, remember? Because that's what you said they do in Arizona.
Well, we want to tie it in for parking passes. We want, you know, heck, if you want to come get a parking pass, are you caught up on your taxes? Are you caught up on your garbage?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, what I wanted to ask you, Alex, the $80,000 that we're in arrears, is that cumulative all the years, 2011, 2010?
Again, I'm not sure that figure, where you're getting that at.
Well, that's what I thought.
That's about 30%. I'm talking about that.
Yeah, again, that's...
It was about 30, but we said 30.
It is definitely cumulative. We, several years ago, we leaned and were able to get maybe our top 10 offenders down. Some of those were into the...
Well, $80,000 is a cumulative figure, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The answer is yes.
Yes, it's not every year.
Okay, so then that's all the years that we've been in business collecting garbage?
Probably 300,000 rather than 80.
And it's probably not forever.
And basically, what we end up being is a bank. We finance their sanitation fees until the people die or their house is sold. And then we have our lien against it. We can collect, we do collect, I think, 6%.
Well, what I'm trying to say is...
Those whole cities go on $100,000 worth.
Well, I mean, it's...
But that's over a period of years.
You don't know how many years.
Well, that's, I don't have to know, but I know that it isn't, I know that it isn't $100,000 in 2011.
No, no.
It's a cumulative amount.
The 90s, the early 90s, maybe the late 80s.
The point I'm trying to make is maybe we are delinquent maybe around $15,000 a year. Probably out of 750,000 that we bill.
Probably a fair number.
It's not, it's maybe 2%. We're running a 2% delinquency.
A year?
A year.
You're looking at cumulative. I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay.
Okay, are we ready to move on from the garbage talk?
Anybody else to ask Michelle?
By the way, this is Richard's container. This is what he's going to use.
That's the smallest that Michelle can give for him.
There, you think you can fill that up? Can you haul this up to the curb, Richard?
I would like to, I do want to have on the card issue, ask Michelle to give her history. What, and I'll preface it to say, most communities are thinking like we've historically thought. No way will our residents want the big card. They want the little ones. But just look at the SUV industry. When your neighbor pulls up with a big hunk of your SUV, it seems interesting how quickly the rest of the neighborhood wants to catch up with the Joneses. But why don't you give us, Michelle, maybe the Meadville example or some of the other examples that you've seen?
Justice enough.
What does it relate to cards?
I still think we should go with the 90s.
The reason it is important is because if we over-inventory a cart that nobody wants, our customers are going to pay higher rates for that. The hauling company's not going to eat it. That's why it's an important discussion. It just isn't a matter of semantics or personal preferences. It's a cost factor. If you say everybody wants 65, but lo and behold, they all want 95, who's going to eat all of that? And what we found is in city after city, who thought the smaller would be the preferred, they're sitting with parking lots full of inventory.
Who, what cities? How much inventory? Where's this graveyard? How many carts do you have in this graveyard that we're talking about? I just don't believe it. That's my problem.
Michelle, could you like get the study on and help people send us that information?
Sure. I mean, I can have you contact two western Pennsylvania towns that made a mistake.
Did we have a survey?
And what we've also found, quite frankly, and I've just talked to Murraysville about this, the more options you, quite frankly, give, the harder it is on the hauler and the longer it takes to deploy the system you desire. You know, again, you can slice this thing 100 different ways, and unfortunately, that just delays everything. So what our recommendation is, is it isn't a bid now, is one size 95 on both recycle, 95 on the, who's the residential? My recommendation and our consultant's recommendation.
So that you do against us, too?
What two?
Fabian.
Oh, when it comes to money, Richard, I'm going to be banning on you, buddy.
Oh, okay.
On that container, though.
Right now, you haven't. I'm going to say, but when it comes to money, she shows me this is going to be less. I have to look at the public people. I'll come up to your house and I'll put your garbage out.
It's on film.
That's a promise. Until Nico leaves the city, I'll send my boy up.
Well, you have to understand, Richard, though, we're streamlining so you're getting put more than just your cans and your plastic in there. You're getting your cardboard on the recycling bin.
I don't...
I mean, you're putting more, you're going to be able to order more stuff.
We use the 17-gallon recycling bin.
Right, there ain't enough now.
Well, this would be four times, almost, yeah, 65 would be about four times.
Yeah, but we're putting paper in the garbage.
That's what I'm saying. 17 is going in now.
You're putting your plastic in the can.
Michelle, what else? You have one more thing?
All I'm asking, all I thought is on that, my one thought is this, if people want a different size, they ought to be able to get it and let them take it. That's what I'm...
I just kind of wanted to clear the air about the whole study. Because we jumped right from the initial discussion, right into the, talking about the contract. We never really talked about at all this evening what we looked at and why we came to some conclusions. And I don't want to take a lot of time, just, you know, I did meet with Joe initially at a luncheon and at a lengthy meeting in Alex's office. I had been to the transfer station physically a number of years ago doing a study for Westmoreland County. What we did initially here, though, was just a very rudimentary look at things. And that told us enough right there that the sanit, we looked at the sanitation department as a whole because that's how your budget is. So we looked at the residential and commercial income. We looked at the income coming over the scale, and we looked at the income of the roll-off business. And we came to the conclusion that, yes, the sanitation department makes money because you mark up the residential and commercial collection, no doubt about it. And yes, you make some money going across the scales, but you really don't hardly make any money at the roll-off business. Then we did this. We looked at this year, 2011, and yeah, it's a big number. But as in anything you analyze, you have to make sure you're not looking at a fluke year. So we looked at all the years before it, too. And we looked at the most recent, 2010, looked exactly like all the years before it. So that told us 2011 isn't real. It's great, I think the department, the Public Works Department, did an excellent job, offered, you know, taking advantage of that opportunity. They should be congratulated for that. But, you know, if you went to Vegas or you inherited a bunch of money this year, your accountant probably is not going to project the rest of your life on what you made this year. And that's what the town needs to do, and that's what we did. And we said, in a good year, historically, the transfer operation, including the roll-off, has only netted, not counting all the depreciation and labor, $30,000. So that's what you're really looking at, not $300,000. That's why we keep jumping from $450,000 down. Because what everybody was looking at at first is last year's number. So I hope that explains it a little more.
Thank you. And I have for council's purview, produced, I think, for the committee, you know, that is an initial report, you know, within four or five pages. And that's been provided as well for the Public Works Director, you know, a week or so ago and then weeks before that initial set. And that, you know, trying to get at the difference between combined and netting out the three different operations.
Okay, next statement?
Okay, so we're still under Public Works and looking at the CDVG paving. It's likely that we're going to have a, to have council approve a change order, you know, related to that. The good news is we saved a bit of money on the city side of paving to the tune of about $10,000. And the change order on the CDVG is going to be about $15,000. So that there will be a net to the negative, to the bad of $5,000 if you look at them as combined paving program this year. So, but if the change order upwards, then we'll have to have council approve for the paving of the fifth ward. Right now, there's really nothing on planning and development. In police, we need the council to entertain a resolution for a $5,000 grant from the county DA for a new K-9 vehicle. Many of you guys may know, the K-9 vehicle was a used purchase in 2002 and has been kept on the road with our Public Works Department, but has outlived its useful life cycle. So we have ordered a new K-9 vehicle, which will be paid for by the revenues raised by the K-9 fund, not with taxpayer dollars, except for, of course, this is taxpayer dollars being from the DA's office, but city residents. And specifically Officer Dirk and his family and all his friends, which seem to come out of the woodwork to help him out, and many others have been very generous, including our local companies have been generous as well. And we're looking at a vehicle that's about $30,000. And we're recycling parts of equipment that we'll be able to, but that's about the total price. And we're looking at end of October, maybe November delivery, where you'll see Rocky in the new vehicle. We've had a request at St. Joe's Club for a couple ADA parking spaces, over in the sixth ward. Will probably, though we don't have it in hand, have something from the dog kennel about our dog pickup. That usually happens in October. We'll look for that. We're looking on administration, there was a couple items that we had advertised publicly in the display copies of our Chapter 256, but never were addressed. And you'll see those there on your proposed agenda. And then we have, we're still, we're advertising for an appointment to the planning commission, and we have an interest in the civil service commission. Yes, sir?
On the 35% discount for city residents, would that include the area along Spring Street, the south side, between Lincoln Air and Allison?
We will be pulling those meters. I think we had talked about this.
I just thought, I don't remember, but I remember thinking after you brought it up last meeting, Richard, I'm wondering if we shouldn't look at some of those places where we put meters in because of the parking garage in front of people's homes. And now we need to be pulling those out. But what we have to be careful about is that we make those permit-only parking so that we don't have people working downtown parking in front of somebody's house because they don't pay.
Well, what we've done, Richard, is create a downtown resident pass at a monthly rate of $15, and that won't get a 35% discount. It's for the other residents of the town who work in the downtown.
The meters you're thinking of pulling, are the people going to be able to park in front of their homes?
If they have a permit.
They have to pay $15 a month. Is that it?
It could be that, but it's not live. It'll be just the typical residential district like we would have in other parts, I believe, we have people do...
I don't think that's what he's talking, I don't think he's talking about making them buy a permit. I think if they're a resident, they are a resident, they will come down and get a permit by parking.
The old-fashioned permit parking. It's been around for decades.
What we've, when we talk about the downtown residents, we're thinking of the Masonic Building, National Church Residence, and the different apartments in town.
Do they want to use the garage for parking of their vehicles? Is that what you're referring to?
In a non-reserve space, yes.
Speaking of parking, I had some second thoughts about the fines, the $10 fine that was proposed. And I think we should probably keep the $10 fine for two-hour, two-hour meters and drop the fine to $5 for other than two-hour meters.
We already voted on it. I don't know that we want to re-up. I mean, do we? I guess we can.
I do anything that'll decrease the fine, I'd use a favor of anything. I think it would be, might be good PR if we drop the fine down to five.
You're not talking about on the street, though?
Anything other than two-hour, two-hour meters continue with the $10.
The reasoning being it's $6 to park for eight hours.
Yeah, so we need to...
What about the half-hour meters?
Well, it would be $10. Two-hour, half-hour meters and two-hour meters, we keep the fine at $10. And anything other than that, we make the fine $5.
That would take a motion in some committee to amend the ordinance.
We can add that to the agenda?
I'd like to, I'd like to, at least...
That would be a motion to amend the ordinance or the rates to do whatever.
I would like to at least get the parking authority's opinion of something like that. You know, we put these people...
You'll be tomorrow. You can ask.
No, wait a minute. You know, we got these people, we got people in the parking authority and part of the reason why we didn't listen to them for years about raising rates in the garage.
Understood.
So I think we should get very much...
I'm just throwing that out there. I just had a change of thought about it.
Well, I voted for Richard's.
Right. Well, wait a minute. My amendment, my amendment is to allow it to remain at $3 and only go to five for this...
Seventy-two hours.
Next...
After 72 hours, you say five.
After 72 hours, it'd be five.
Yeah, the problem with keeping it at three is you may as well just...
There's no incentive to play a paving meter.
You may as well stay on the street and get a fine because, yeah, you know.
Well, I'll support you if you go to 95 gallons, Ben.
You know what?
You're ready to get a 95 gallon, Ben, you... And you're going to like it, Richard. You're going to love it.
First thing I'm going to do is drill holes.
What do you do, one bag a week if you don't, you don't do one bag a week?
I'm going to drill holes in the block, okay?
You can do that for drainage.
Because there gets some water in there. I'm not going to be able to move it, that's for sure.
Richard, how many bags you put out a week?
About three.
You put out three? What the hell you and your wife doing up there, huh?
We read, you know, we read, we read the newspapers.
You don't recycle your papers?
We get Littro Bulletin, we get the Tribune Renew.
I read three newspapers a day. I've delivered to my house and I recycle them.
The New York Times.
I recycle my newspapers.
I get the Great Legion magazine. You don't get that.
You know, I read in the paper about, you know, when it was posted about the rates and that there. I'm going to be firm, I don't know if I'm that stupid or not. You know, it may be very confusing for a lot of people in Littro unless it's posted on the meters themselves, if they can park there. It seemed very confusing. Maybe the newspaper didn't bring it out right or something, but...
Play the paper.
Well, yeah, but we've got the citizens of Littro that we've got to consider, do they really know what it's, if the meters, you know, they can park there two hours? Are the meters going to be marked, you can only park here two hours or something like that?
They are, they are.
They will, okay. And all the change, okay.
Alex, you started to say that you had someone interested in the planning commission?
Being the chair, one of the existing members is willing to be chair and a person interested in serving on the civil service commission so we can put a full complement there as well.
Okay, but we're, even though there's someone that's willing to be the chair...
Well, yeah, we still are advertising. We still need a person to serve on the planning commission.
Serve on the committee for the empty spot.
Correct.
Anything else?
How will you bring this up? What is your recommendation on the fines?
I say we lower it to $5 for the first 24 hours, $10 after 24 hours on meters. On meters other than half hour and two hour. We have a two-tiered fine system. It's $10 for half.
$30.
I'm not complicating.
Are you making $30 after 72 hours?
Hell, yeah.
So it's 5, 10, and 30?
No, it's still 10 on the two and under.
Two and under remains at 10. We're not going to break it at an eight-hour meter.
Why do you go to 30 then?
You don't need any of this if you just use Pango.
I know. I never forget to shut it off.
No, I do. I do.
Baskets and...
My ass is...
Salt and cheese throw. Did you go up already?